This. What we're covering is some of the base content. I'm gonna be looking at the Kansas life insurance pre-licensed outline, but this doesn't mean that. Um, this doesn't apply to your state. So this base content that we're gonna be covering here today. It's pretty much the same in every state. Okay, so it's not just Kansas. So traditional whole life policies is uh one of the con- the piece of the content. So an ordinary whole life. Okay, ordinary whole life. Is a life insurance policy that's typically paid. Until the insured reaches age one hundred. Premiums are fixed, so the premiums don't change. And the death benefit. Is level as well. So the death benefits fixed. It's permanent coverage. So whole life insurance is permanent coverage. Okay? If you get a whole life policy. If you get a whole life policy. Then you'll have coverage for your whole life. That's what it means. So what happens is the insured makes premium payments until they reach age one hundred. When they reach age one hundred. That's what's called the i- it endows. The policy endows. And what at that point, what happens is the insured gets a check from the insurance company for the face amount of the policy. Now there's cash value in whole life. It's like a savings component. That increases every year. The whole life component, uh the sorry, the cash value is like a savings component of a whole life policy. So as someone's paying into their policy. The cash value accumulates over time. It grows inside the policy. That's money that someone can access typically in the form of a policy loan. So they can take a loan out against the cash value. So it means as they're paying in their insurance. They can borrow against some of the equity in a policy. Now, when they reach age one hundred, the cash value at that point reaches the face amount. So if they got a hundred thousand dollar whole life policy, when they eat reach the the cash value will increase steadily until they each reach age one hundred. At which point, the cash value will be equal to the face amount of the policy and the policy endows. And the insured will get a check for the face amount of the policy, the four hundred thousand dollars. So it's like a forced savings account. We'll get it this way. It's like saying, hey, I wanna save up a hundred thousand dollars by the time I reach age one hundred. If I die before that, then someone else is gonna get the money. If I live to age one hundred, I'll get a check for it. Does that make sense? So it's it's like guaranteed that either they're gonna get the money when they reach age one hundred, or their family will get the money when they die, permanent insurance. Whole life is like owning a house. Term life is like renting a house. Okay, so whole life is gonna cost you more. But you have equity in it. Term is cheaper, it's temporary. And when you're done, you're just done. You wash your hands with it. There's limited pay in single premium whole life as well. So you know how I was saying people pay whole life until they reach age one hundred? Well. There is an a s- limited pay, which means, hey, I I only wanna pay it for twenty years, or I only wanna pay until I reach age sixty five or something like that, right? So there's limited pay, which is where they pay it until they reach a certain age or for a set number of years. Okay, so that's what we're looking at here, limited pay. Limited pay. So limited pay is when they pay it for a certain amount of time. Or until a certain age, and then single premium. Is when they make one payment, and that's just a single premium payment. And the policy's in force for for good. Okay? So I'm gonna show you guys, I'm gonna show you guys an illustration. Hopefully it doesn't let people write on this. Do you know limits how many whole life insurance you can purchase? No, but every company may have a limit of a fate, like how much insurance they're willing to give you. Okay? You can have unlimited, you can have as many whole life policies as you want, but some companies may say, hey, I'm not gonna give you more than what we get already gave you. So like when you work with us, you'll see some carriers will be like, okay, well. You can have as many policies as you want, but. They can only total a maximum of like fifty thousand or thirty five thousand or something like that. So someone can have one policy that's a fifty thousand dollar policy, or they can have two twenty five thousand dollar policies or ten five thousand dollar policies. Doesn't matter, the max they can get is fifty with that company. Now, every company is different though. So I'm gonna show you, we're just gonna look at traditional whole life here. Okay, so this is traditional whole life. Okay, so or ordinary whole life. Okay, so I'm just gonna put O R D for ordinary. So the way it works is say this is time. So we have time right here, and then this is money. Okay? We're gonna look at the uh the premium. So what they spend a month. Is gonna be set. So say they spend a certain amount every month, okay? Over time, this indicates how much premium they're spending every year or every month is the same. Now, the death benefit is also going to be the same. Okay? And then what happens is the cash value. Is going to increase like this. Until age one hundred. Let's just say this is age one hundred right here. At which point the cash value equals the death benefit. And the insured gets a check for the death benefit amount or the face the face amount. If they die here, then the payout is this amount. So the death benefits the same. The cash value increases over and the premium is the same. Any questions about that? Okay, so now we're gonna look at what a. Limited pay whole life looks like. Okay, so we're gonna look at limited. So limited pay. Okay, so limited pay. The premium. Say they're only gonna pay their premiums until age sixty five. Okay? Or say this is twenty years after they get the policy, they're forty five. So they can say, hey, I'm gonna pay it for ten years or twenty years, or I'm gonna pay it till I'm age sixty five. The premiums. For those first twenty years are gonna be higher than if they got an ordinary whole life policy where they pay it till age one hundred. Right? Cause they have to pay more in a shorter amount, the same amount in a shorter amount of time. But actually, ultimately, they end up paying less, cause they don't have to pay as many policy fees and stuff like that. So if someone has a limited pay whole life. And they live to age one hundred, they're gonna actually end up paying less than the person who had a ordinary whole life. Because they're like prepaying it, right? And what happens here too is the cash value will accumulate. And then the cash value may actually start with more cash value. But the cash value may accumulate, and then the death benefit is theirs too. I know the colors are a little different. And then the same thing, it reaches age one hundred, whatever here, and then it end up. So the difference is they stop paying their premiums here on a limited pay whole life. Thumbs up if you guys understand that. Virtual. And. Uh, virtual or real life thumbs up. Okay, I got Sariel. Okay, if someone doesn't understand that, put it in the chat. Put understand, I understand if if you understand, but I don't understand if you don't understand, put it in the chat. So. I'm gonna explain it again real quick. So with a limited pay whole life. The client's only paying for a certain amount of time. So in ordinary, a traditional whole life, the client pays every year or every month until they're one hundred years old. In a limited pay whole life, they're gonna, they're they get a policy, they say, I only wanna pay on this for twenty years or sixty five or until I'm age sixty five. Or only wanna pay on it for ten years or something like that. So that's why the premiums in red here stop after a certain amount of time. If this this was an ordinary whole life. They would pay less every month, but they would have to pay it for longer, right? So limited pay just means instead of paying every month until I'm a hundred years old, I'm gonna pay more every month, but I'm only gonna pay for a certain amount of time. No, it can go seventy, uh it it doesn't matter, I'm just using twenty or twenty five as an example. You can do a five pay, ten pay, twenty pay, pay to age seventy, five sixty, five fifty, whatever, it doesn't matter. So um if you guys aren't still aren't sure about it, I would check in your course on whole life. So next, we're gonna look at single premium whole life. So imagine they just make one premium payment. That's it, boom. The death benefits level. The cash value is actually gonna start. You have immediate cash value and it's gonna grow until age one hundred. So single premium, they just make one payment. Uh API phone, you you don't end up paying the same. You actually pay less if you do a single premium or a limited pay. Because you pay more upfront, but over the long term, you end up paying less. But most people can't afford a single premium. Or it's not a good investment for them anyway. Okay? So that's how. Traditional. Limited pay and single play, single pay whole life work. Next, we're gonna cover universal life. And uh some interest in market sensitive adjustable life products. Um, so we have universal life. Universal life is like a mix between a term life and a whole life. Okay? So universal life, they can adjust the premiums. They can adjust the death benefit. If you wanna increase the death benefit, you have to go through underwriting again. But universal life is a way of. Getting a little more death benefit for less money upfront. And still having a cash value accumulation. So the difference between whole life and universal life. Is that in whole life. The cost of insurance, meaning what the company is charging every year for the insurance policy, like the base cost from the company. Is the same in whole life, so it never goes up from day one till day death. It's the same, the cost, meaning the internal cost, not the premium that you pay. But the internal cost that the insurance company deems, this is how much the policy costs, everything above beyond that is fees and profit. Okay? So there's an internal cost to keep the policy going. That's the same every year on a whole life. On a universal life, that cost increases every year. So it starts a lot lower than the cost of a whole life, but it ends up being a lot higher. Okay? So what happens is on a universal life, you're essentially overpaying upfront. The cash value starts to accumulate, cause you're overpaying, so extra money gets stored as cash value. And then later on, once the cost of insurance goes up, the cost of insurance may end up exceeding. The premium payment that the person is making every month or every year. At that point, the cash value in the policy. Has to go to cover the difference between what they're paying and what the cost of insurance is. So I'm going to do a little. Diagram on that, my my. Award-winning art class diagrams here. So. We're gonna look again. We're gonna have. Uh, okay, so universal life, we're gonna look at the premium. Say the premium is red, cause no one wants to pay it. So say they pay, they say the premium can be anywhere from here all the way down to here, so they can vary how much they spend. Month. Say they spend this much a month. Okay? Now, the cost of insurance, we're gonna do the cost of insurance as a dark yellow, looks like orange to me, but I guess it's dark yellow. So say the cost of insurance starts really low, but then it increases over time. Okay? The cost of insurance, let me uh let me actually erase that. Whoa, hold on. So the cost of insurance. Is going to increase over time. So let's look at it like this. Okay, say that's the cost. So you guys see here how the premium. See how the premium. Exceeds the cash, uh the cash, I mean, sorry, the cost of insurance ends up exceeding the premiums. You guys see that? At first, they're paying less. And then they, at first, they're paying, they're paying more than the cost, and then later they're paying less than the cost. You guys see that? Okay, I hope so, I mean, it's right there. Alright, so now what happens is. We're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna look at the death benefit here. So we're gonna do, say that, say the death benefits right here, alright? Now, the cash value, the death benefit is the same. Cash value is gonna go like this. Say the cash value increases, and then it starts to decrease here. Now, at this time, so what happens is you're overpaying here. So the cash value increases, and then right where the cost of insurance. Starts to exceed what they're paying for the insurance. The difference comes out of the cash value, cause they're saying, okay, well, this year it costs five hundred dollars a year for your policy. You're spending four hundred dollars a year, so we have to take that difference out of the hu- the cash value. So we're taking a hundred out of the cash value. And then every year, they end up having to take more out of the cash value. Because the cost keeps increasing. Now, what happens is at some point, when this runs out of cash value, what the heck just happened? I don't know what just happened. Think someone touched the screen and hit some. So what what ends up happening is when the, when the cash value is out. That person either has to keep paying in in increasing what their premiums are to keep up with the rising cost of insurance, or they lose their policy. Okay? That's basically how universal life works. All this stuff I'm talking about too, I have on my YouTube channel. So youtube.com slash life insurance exam prep, life insurance exam prep, right? Variable whole life, we're looking at that next on the outline. I'll give you guys this outline. This is Kansas's outline. Most states outlines are similar for the base content. For the, for the general content, um but the, the state-specific stuff's obviously different. So variable whole life is a whole life policy where the cash value is invested in securities. Like stocks and bonds and mutual funds and stuff like that. Okay? Traditional whole life has its cash value invested in. The company's investments. So in a traditional whole life, the insurance company says, okay, we're taking your premiums, we're gonna invest that money, obviously, right? Cause. They have to invest it to make money. And they're usually very safe, long-term investments with life insurance companies. But if someone wants to take more risk to take, to get more return, they can invest it in the stock market in terms of mutual funds. And securities. That's what happens in a variable whole life. So the cash value may increase or decrease year to year in variable. But typically, over time, a variable whole life will give someone a greater return than an ordinary whole life. Especially if it's long-term, right? The stock market, it's like eight to ten percent average long-term, if it's like the S P S and P five hundred. A traditional whole life, they're probably only gonna get you four or five percent return, something like that, if it's a, if it's a very good company. Why would someone not want variable whole life? Well, maybe they wouldn't wanna take the chance of it going up and down. And uh maybe they're, they don't have the time horizon. So if someone got a variable whole life policy for a child. That makes a lot more sense, cause it's like, okay, cool, they're not gonna use this for decades. But if someone's in their fifties and sixties and they get off variable whole life, they're like, well, maybe they don't wanna take that risk. Variable universal life, same thing, the cash value is invested in stocks, and same with interest-sensitive whole life. In indexed whole life, the cash value will accumulate based on the market conditions, but they may have a maximum. And minimum for indexed whole life. Oh, cool, thanks, Gary. Yeah, I had extended it to noon because there were some people, I was gonna have it at nine, but there's some people living like California, Colorado, Utah, Texas, all the way. A little early, well, six AM Saturday study session. I know you guys want some uh some sleep there. Uh, next, we're gonna look at term life, okay, term life insurance. Okay? So term life insurance. Is temporary protection. Okay, so imagine term life is, I'm getting a life insurance policy for a certain amount of time. So whole life, they have it their whole life, it's permanent, doesn't go away. Okay? Makes sense? Term life, it's like I'm only gonna have it for a certain amount of time. Term life is typically used to cover debts. And replace income for a breadwinner. Maybe a couple of other reasons, but those are the most common. So for instance, say someone get mortgage protection life insurance, it's a big uh marketing thing. So say someone gets a mortgage and it's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. And they wanna get a life insurance policy in case they die, their family can keep the house, or it's paid off. They don't have to keep paying the mortgage. Right? So they can get a two hundred thousand dollar term life for thirty years, the lifetime of the mortgage, or fifteen years, or however long the mortgage is. To make sure that if they die, the family's gonna have the money. They can do decreasing term as well, a lot of companies, they talk about it in the course. In practical uses, most people don't ever buy a decreasing term policy. It's just the term policy is super cheap, so it's the difference between like forty bucks a month or like twenty five, you know, it's like. Whatever, take the chance on the fifteen bucks that my family's gonna get, you know, hopefully, hopefully. So hopefully people, so when people are bad clients, they'll ask, well, what if I outlive my term policy? Do I get any money back? Uh, no, hopefully you don't. Hopefully, this is the worst investment of your life, because it means you lived past the time. Right? So it's like, some policies are structured, so they will get some of their premiums back. It's called return of premium term policies. You may learn about that in the course. But I don't think they're a good investment personally, cause they charge you pretty much like twice the amount to get your premiums back. And if you just took that money and invested it, difference, then you'd make way more out of it. So it's kinda like. If someone's irresponsible financially, then yeah, it makes sense to do it, but it's not, it's not a good investment, cause think about it, if if you get your money back in twenty years. I mean, it's gonna be worth. Sixty percent of the amount anyway from inflation, right, or seventy percent. So it's like, you're not really getting your money back. Okay, so there's level term, which is the death benefit is the same. The premiums are the same. Then there's decreasing term, the premium is the same every month, but the death benefit decreases over time. There's return of premium term, which I just talked about there. So if the person outlives their policy, they can get. Money back, or if the person dies. Then they'll get the death benefit plus the premiums paid in. Okay? Now, term policy is structured in terms of how long they have it as well. So you can do an annual renewable term. Where every year, the policy increases a little bit in price. So that's usually the cheapest for any given moment, annual renewable. So it's like, okay, I'm gonna pay the the the. Whatever the lowest amount is right now for me to have that term, price is gonna go up a little bit every year. And then they can have, you can have a five-year term, or a ten-year term, or fifteen, or twenty, or twenty-five, or thirty, some companies go up to forty. Year term policies. It depends what the company offers and how the client wants to structure it. But it's essentially they're saying, okay, I'm gonna average my premiums out over the lifetime of the term, and that's what I pay every month. Okay, and then at the end of the term, uh there are some features that some term policies have. So renewable term. Means when that term expires, you can renew it for a new term policy. Most people don't renew their policies unless it's an annual renewable term. Because at, they usually charge such a crazy rate for like longer term, longer lifetime term policies. Um, for, they usually charge a lot to renew it, because they want the person to have to go through underwriting again. Does that make sense? So they're like, okay, well, if you get a twenty-year term, you're gonna pay a hundred bucks a month. At the end of the twenty-year, you might pay two thousand five hundred dollars a month. That's what it's gonna cost to renew. And at that point, the person's like, nah, let me see if I can get a new policy. Cause the company wants to make sure that person's still healthy, right? So they usually charge like a super crazy amount to renew it, knowing that the person's probably not gonna renew. It may make sense to renew if they're terminal though, right? Like if they're, if they know they're gonna die or something. Okay, and then uh we're looking at convertible term. So convertible term is when someone gets a term policy. That can be converted to a permanent life insurance policy. So say you have a term policy, you wanna convert it to a whole life. That's a convertible term. Okay? So you can have your your term policy, and at any point, you can convert it to a whole life. Your premiums would increase. Obviously, cause the premiums for a whole life policy are a lot more than a term for the same face amount. Because a term, most likely someone's gonna outlive it. A whole life, it's impossible, you're not gonna outlive it. So it's guaranteed the company's gonna have to pay a death benefit at some point for a term, for a whole life. For a term, there's only like a two percent chance that they're actually gonna have to pay a bad claim on that. Most people don't even keep term policies for the whole lifetime either. They usually cancel it or convert it. So someone can be like, okay, I have a hundred thousand dollar term policy, it's a hundred bucks a month, I wanna convert that to a whole life, maybe it's gonna be. I don't know, over a thousand bucks a month for the same, for the same thing for a whole life. Cause it's, it creates an immediate estate. Okay, next, we're gonna look at annuities. So I'm gonna cover this briefly, and then and then I'll let you guys go, cause this is, I know, this is kind of some. Detail stuff. So annuities, an annuity is a way to give a life insurance company a bunch of money, so that they can just, they can pay it out in an income stream. So think about when someone wins the lottery. They can either take a lump sum. Or they can take installments over time, right? Essentially, what happens when they take installments, it works like an annuity. So instead of the company saying, okay, here's a hundred thousand dollars. Or a million dollars, say it's a million dollars, they went in the lottery. They're gonna say, we're gonna give you X amount of money for however many years. Okay? Now, the total payments end up being higher than the lump sum. Because they're they're earning interest over time. So the way an annuity works is, a lot of the most popular of form of an annuity is someone retires. And they have a bunch of cash in their 401K. And instead of just having a big account sitting there with a bunch of cash, they say, okay, we're gonna give a bunch of this money or all of it to a life insurance company. The life insurance, they're gonna purchase an annuity, and the life insurance company is going to then pay them every month out of that lump sum. And there's different types of annuities, and say, okay, we're gonna give you X amount of money for your entire life. Every X amount of money a year for your entire life. So if the person dies early, they lose it. They live past a certain time, then they make out on it. Okay? The the annuity payouts can be structured in many different ways, but I want you guys to understand the general concept. You're giving, you can't use notes on the final written note. You're giving a bunch of money to the insurance company. Whether it's a one-time lump sum or overtime, and then at some point, the annuity starts paying. The person who put the money in, or whoever they have, they elect to receive the money. So there's an accumulation period where the money accumulates in the annuity to grow, and then there's an annuitization period. Where it starts paying out every year or every month, however frequent they want the installments to be paid out to that person to create an income stream. Cause if someone retires, a lot of times they're like, well, look, if I have a million dollars sitting in this account, who knows what I'm gonna do with it? But I I need, I need, you know, an an income every month. Income is more important than savings, so they're like, well, just get, make sure I have my income every month to. For, you know, whatever they they decide, they they decide how they want it structured. There's a bunch of different ways to structure annuities. Uh, they can be classified based on if they make one lump sum payment or paid over time. They can be classified based on if they're based, if the interest rate in the annuity is based on the insurance company's accounts. Or the separate variable accounts that we talked about, like stocks, bonds, mutual funds, stuff like that. Okay, and there's different payout options on annuities. So I'm not gonna get into those here, cause it's a lot. You'll go through that in your course. Um, but that's basics on what an annuity is. Okay? So um, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stop that there. Stop that there because we covered a good amount of.